The regular meeting of the Biscarus City Council for June the 5th, 2018 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
McKeever, Myers.
Yes.
Wireball.
Yes.
Trucca.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Foote.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Okay, we have several sets of minutes to approve here. We have, the first set is for the May 15th, 2018 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trucca, second by Mr. Foote, to accept the minutes from the May 15th, 2018 regular meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passes. We also have the minutes from the May 17th, 2018 special meeting. This meeting was called to order to, uh, uh, was for the salt. We needed to get that done quickly so we could make it in time with the state, uh, to get our order in. I need a motion to accept these minutes for the May 17th, 2018 special meeting. Second. Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Shaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. And finally, we have minutes from the May 30th, 2018 special meeting. And this was to, um, uh, legislation right for the issuance of the sale of the $300,000 in bond anticipation notes for capital improvements at Allmiller Park. All, I need a motion please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Ms. Sack, to approve the minutes for the May 30th, 2018 special meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you. This is where we've granted permission for visitors to see. Is there anyone that would like to address council this evening? We assume that's why you're here. Name and address please.
My name is Sam Colwell, 621 State Route 4. Uh, just to reintroduce myself, if maybe you all forgot. In a couple of months, back in March, I took over the banking board's job at the Lincoln Vatican. I've said to try to keep this at least 30 minutes, but, okay. Just to let you guys know, it's been a busy two and a half months. Doing quite a bit, actually, so far. I think we've probably contacted well over 30 victims in that two month period. A lot of that's domestic violence, as you probably all suspect. Different other things, assaults, some car crash victims we dealt with too. Getting off doing some public speaking, making contact with some other organizations such as Turnpoint, which has sort of already helped up a lot. Learning some things they do that may help us help victims to possibly get some pretty legal advice through them and through contacts they have. Quite a bit of training already. Got a lot more to go this summer, especially August, even during the visiting term. Learning a lot more about Marcy's Law. I think the first weekend I was in, we went down, got a four hour dose of Marcy's Law and what to expect. So there's a lot of, uh, a lot of things you have to do to comply with Marcy's Law and let the victims know the court dates and what's going on in there. That's not their constitutional right. It's not their law, but their constitutional right. Just wanted to come and say hello, to introduce myself and go to you guys, let you know what's going on. We just opened up for next year's grant that is due the end of June to be completed and submitted to the state. Appreciate your financial support over the grant, it's very valuable. The feds and the state feed quite a bit of that, not through taxpayer money, if you don't know that, but they feed that through penalties and public debt, organizations, whatever it is you're, at state level. If you have any questions, I'm down there Monday through Friday, nine to five. I can tell you right now, you might want to make an appointment if you want to stop by. I'm moving here, there, to court, go out, try to find victims, or again, make contact with other groups within the, within the city and other groups such as Turnpoint. They'd get to visit Turnpoint, very sheltered, very nice shelter, very secure shelter. They do a great job down there, it's probably been one of their biggest assets, so. Like I said, if you have any questions, feel free, you know, feel free to get along with me anytime. Down there Monday through Friday, actually eight to five, sorry. Feel free to stop by, okay? Thank you guys really much, appreciate it.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Sam, we're all glad you're down there.
Good office work, they're doing a job down there.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to address council this evening? No one? We have communications and petitions then please.
Well, we've got three letters here. The first one is from the Tax Incentive Review Council dated May 9th, addressed to city council. The Crawford County Tax Incentive Review Council recently met to review the tax abatement agreements for your jurisdiction. This review was done in conjunction with the annual report filed May, March 31st, 2018 by the Enterprise Zone Manager in his report of superiority and weakness under the rule of 2017. We're closed to applying the recommendations made by the Tax Incentive Review Council as required by the Ohio Vice Code, Section 570-925. A legislative authority that receives from the Tax Incentive Review Council written recommendations shall within 60 days after receipt, hold a meeting and vote to accept, reject, or modify all or any portion of the recommendations. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Enterprise Zone Manager for your jurisdiction or the sincerely John Wolfe Chairman, Tax Incentive Review Council. And attached you will see the various recommendations and ask to refer to the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, could I have a motion please to refer this to Economic Development?
So moved. Second.
Second was, Mr. Foote. Uh, motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Foote, to put the, uh, information from the Tax Incentive Review Council into Economic Development Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passes, thank you very much.
We have a letter here addressed to Biscarus City Council dated May 23, 2018, from the Biscarus Tree Board Chair. Dear council members, at the last meeting of the Biscarus Tree Board, it was recommended that the following changes be made Biscarus codified in Section 909.09 of the Tree Code, which reads as follows. You know, silver maple, poplar, box elder, basswood, willow, honey locust, varieties of, uh, honey locust which is lined out and replaced with varieties of thorn trees, cataupa or sycamore, and sycamore is lined out, and is replaced with calory pear and cultivars of calory pear, shall henceforth be permitted to be planted upon any tree lawn in the city. Any silver maple, honey locust, sycamore, and again, honey locust and sycamore are lined out, cataupa, poplar, basswood, box elder, willow upon private property in the city in such close proximity to any public place in the city, as well permit the roots of the tree to penetrate through or under the surface of any public place in the city. It is declared to be a public nuisance and shall be abated by the Service Safety Director as of ordinance 2778, passed 6/16/1964. Since there are varieties of the honey locusts that do not have thorns and are magnificent street trees, we recommend that it be removed from the list of prohibited trees and replaced with varieties of thorn trees. The calory pear and all cultivars of this species are now considered an invasive tree. The state of Ohio has declared it an invasive species and will soon prohibit the sale of these trees by nurseries. It is recommended that the calory pear and all cultivars of this species be added to the list of prohibited trees. The sycamore tree is a beautiful, hardy tree that offers a beautiful canopy to our urban forest. With modern leaf machines, these trees are now easier to maintain in the urban environment. Given a wide tree lawn, these trees make a great addition to our urban forest. A successful example can be seen at 126 West Wentzalier Street, the northeast corner of Poplar Street and Wentzalier Street. Sincerely, Valerie Spring, Biscarus Tree Board Chair. This matter is already in the Public Lands and Buildings Committee and just has to be accepted and filed.
Okay, I think we had asked them to get back with this, with this information. So, uh, the, uh, that will be on the list for discussion Thursday evening. So I need a motion to accept and file this letter.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Myers, to accept and file the letter from the Biscarus Tree Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed, thank you.
And lastly, we have a, a letter addressed to Biscarus City Council, attention to council presidents. It's not a date on this letter. Dear City Council Members, the Biscarus Public Library Board of Trustees has had two board members submit their resignations. The resignations have been accepted by Board President Sammy Shields, effective Monday, May 21st. Those resigning are Debbie Gifford and Cory Carmine, both whose terms expire December 2018. The Biscarus Public Library Board of Trustees would like the Biscarus City Council to appoint the following persons as replacements for Gifford and Carmine, with terms expiring in December 2018. Those names are Donna Moore, 1529 Bradbury Court, Biscarus, and Hannah Jacobs, 629 Rich Avenue, in Biscarus. Replacements are needed as soon as possible to ensure forums at upcoming board meetings. Thank you, Brenda Kreider, Director of the Biscarus Public Library, and ask to refer to the Economic Development Committee.
So a changeover from, uh, some longstanding members there. I need a motion then to refer this to the Economic Development Committee.
So moved. Sacka.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Trucca, to place the letter from the Biscarus Public Library into Economic Development. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed, thank you. Moving on down to standing committee reports. Mr. Foote, would you like to get us started please?
Yes, Biscarus City Council Joint Regular Committees were called to order Thursday, May 17th, 2018 at 6:00 P.M. Members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Trucca, Monica Sack, myself, and Andrew Shaw. First order of business, Biscarus City's Joint Regular Committees was called to order by myself at 6:00 P.M. Number two, public participation, we had none. Number three, order of committee business. Uh, first up is Economic Development Committee at 6:00 P.M. And members in attendance, Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. First order of business was Enterprise Zones Community Reinvestment Areas. Lauren Falcone, served by planner with Pogemeyer Design Group, spoke about updating the city's community reinvestment area ordinance and handbook to offer up to 100% real estate tax abatement for up to 15 years for improved residential properties. Presently, only commercial and industrial properties qualify for CRA's in the city. She also noted that properties annexed by the city since 2004, when the CRA ordinance became law, don't qualify. So those boundaries shouldn't be reached wrong. Unlike the commercial and industrial, terms of residential CRA would not be negotiable but written in the deal. Falcone explained that only the property tax on residential properties increased valuation due to improvement, as determined by the county auditor, would be eligible for it. Law Director Rob Ratliff noted that it could be beneficial to have a vehicle to incentivize the redeployment of rental properties in the city. He will draft a detailed proposal for adding residential properties to the city's CRA ordinance, including the cost of doing so, for the committee to consider at a future meeting. Foote rests recess, the Economic Development Committee at 6:23 P.M.
Any questions or comments regarding the Economic Development Committee meeting? Okay, moving on, plating, Mr. McKeever's not here, second is?
Mr. Myers.
Mr. Myers?
All right. Plating Committee met at 6:23 P.M. Members present, Monica Sack, Bruce Trucca, Kevin Myers, and Mark McKeever, Chair. Item one, multifamily housing in R3 District, Council held a public hearing on a request from the city planning commission to amend 1163.04 of the Biscarus Codified Ordinance to allow multifamily housing in the urban neighborhood residential R3 District as a conditional use, provided five minimum conditions are met. The request, according to the letter, stems from a zoning amendment application submitted by the owner of the property at 902 Wetstone Street. Myers made a motion to request legislation amending 1163.04 of the Biscarus Codified Ordinance to allow multifamily housing in the urban neighborhood residential R3 District as a conditional use, with a second by Trucca. Motion passed by voice vote. Item two, street and alley vacations at Hartman Park. In an email, Police Chief David Kepke wrote that the Biscarus Area Youth Soccer is interested in facilitating the vacating alleys between Clinton and Water Streets to enhance Hartman Park. This is in the vicinity of the old water plant, which is scheduled to be demolished. Ratliff said the soccer program wants to know if council is willing to consider the proposal before a detailed plan is drawn up. The committee expressed interest in seeing a plan, and the matter was continued. Item three, McKeever recessed, the plating committee at 6:41 P.M.
Questions or comments regarding the minutes from that meeting? None? Thank you, moving on to public lands and buildings, Mr. Wireball?
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, uh, they're meeting Thursday, May 17th, 2018, and at 6:41. Members present, Bruce Trucca, Doug Foote, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. Park improvements, during a committee meeting on May 3rd, legislation was requested to provide for the issuance, issuance in sale of $250,000 of notes in anticipation of a bond issuance to pay the cost of capital improvements in the city parks. Since then, however, the figure has changed as the administration has determined that the pump in the Allmiller Park pool also needs to be replaced this summer. That would require a total of $300,000 in notes. Auditor Joyce Schiffer provided financial comparisons of a bond anticipation note for a possible cost of $416,088, every new annually over 10 years, and general obligation recreation bonds for a total cost of $377,250. She suggested that paying off a note over two years would be best. If no city employees retire during that time, otherwise the city, otherwise, the city could switch over to bonds, if and when. She also noted that a note could be arranged more quickly. The administration wants to repair the pool in late summer. McKeever made a motion to approve the change and send the matter to the Finance Committee, with a second by Foote. Motion passed by voice vote. Wireball recessed, Public Lands and Buildings Committee at 6:55 P.M.
Any questions or comments regarding the minutes from that meeting? No, moving on, Service Committee, Mr. Trucca.
Members present? I don't have my sunglasses. Uh, Service Committee met at 6:55 P.M. Members present were Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, Andrew Shaw, and myself. Number one, road salt contract. The administration is requesting legislation authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with ODOT to participate in an annual road salt bid. The city has 400 tons of salt left over from the previous winter, which was less than in recent winters, so is asking to purchase 800 tons for next winter. Foote made a motion requesting legislation, with a second by Wireball. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, water line expansion. Law Director Rob Ratliff recapped County Commissioners' meeting of earlier in the day, which several council members attended, regarding assignment of legal rights to the city to act on the behalf of the Crawford County Sewer District. Council members who were there characterized the meeting as productive. The law director was asked to draft a press release reiterating the city has no plans to, and in fact, cannot annex property parcels that are not contiguous to the city limits. The release will also detail a three-tier cap plan for new water customers outside the city, as well as updating installation and capping fees for water customers within, inside and city limits. Trucca recessed, the Service Committee at 7:00 P.M.
Any questions or comments?
I've got two questions.
Mr. Myers?
Uh, first, was a press release ever pronounced?
Yes, yeah.
I've read the news article, but I wasn't sure if that started with you. And my second question, has there been any movement since this?
Uh, yeah, we have a, uh, we have a draft agreement with the, with the county that's been proposed. Uh, but since that time, I don't know how rural water has notified us that they are, uh, notified us and the county that they were planning on not, uh, putting water lines into the Salt Springs area. Uh, what they told us was that the bids were more than double what they anticipated for the cost, uh, so that it wasn't, did become cost effective to them to go into the Salt Springs. So we have, we've got to work with the county to get the rights to go into Salt Springs, do it the right way, get in there, and, you know, work out a plan to get water lines there as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Trucca. Uh, Ms. Sack, finance?
Finance Committee met at 7:08 P.M. The 7:23 P.M. members present, Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and myself, Chair. Number one, park improvements. Earlier in the joint committee meeting, the Public Lands and Buildings Committee approved and forwarded to the Finance Committee a request from the administration seeking legislation to provide for the issuance and sale of $300,000 of notes in anticipation of a bond issuance to pay the cost of capital improvements in the city parks. This is a change from an earlier request for $250,000 in notes, as the administration has determined that the pump in the Allmiller Pool, Park Pool also needs to be replaced this summer. The committee scheduled a special meeting for 6:00 P.M. on May 22nd to consider the matter. If legislation is requested, then a special full council meeting will take place at 6:00 P.M. on May 30th. Number two, road salt contract. The administration is requesting legislation authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with ODOT to participate in his annual road salt bid. The city has 400 tons of salt left over from the previous winter, which is less than in previous winters, so is asking to purchase 800 tons for next winter. Earlier in the joint committee meeting, the Service Committee requested legislation. Shaw made a motion to approve the request, with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, various appropriations. Schiffer reported that the following appropriations needed to be made. A, from unappropriated general funds, $115 to 101 General Fund slash Program 1, Security of Persons and Property slash 7110 and 7111, Police Department, slash 24 Materials and Supplies for Safety County Expenses. B, from unappropriated general funds, $64,030 to 101 General Fund slash Program 3, Leisure Time slash 7310 Parks and Playgrounds slash 25 Capital Outlay for the State Portion of the ODNR, Lake Ohio Trails Fund Grant for the French Ship Drive by Cat. C, from unappropriated general fund, $16,920 to 820 Bare Left Building Liability, slash 7115 Fire Department slash 28 Other Uses for the Fire Loss at 423 Kaler Avenue, as an insurance check has been received. Wireball made a motion to request legislation making the appropriations, with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Four, internet auctions. The administration is requesting legislation declaring the intent of the city to dispose of personal property and equipment that's obsolete through internet auctions for calendar year 2018, retroactive to January 1st, 2018. Shaw made a motion requesting legislation, with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Sack revises the Finance Committee at 7:23 P.M.
Any questions or comments regarding these minutes? Okay, moving on, do you want to finish the sound, please? We'll cut to that special meeting after.
Number four, public transportation, their blood signs. Number five, access to a motion to adjourn the Joint Regular Meeting, motion by Myers, and second by Schiffer to adjourn at 7:23 P.M. Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the Finance Committee met in a special session on Tuesday, May 22nd, at 6:00 P.M.
Members present were Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and myself, Chair. Number one, the Special Finance Committee meeting was called by Finance Chair Monica Sack and Finance Committee Members Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, and Andrew Shaw to discuss park improvements. The meeting was called to order by Sack at 6:00 o'clock P.M. Number two, park improvements. On May 17th, the Public Lands and Buildings Committee approved and forwarded to the Finance Committee a request from the administration seeking legislation to provide for the issuance and sale of $300,000 of notes in anticipation of a bond issuance to pay the cost of capital improvements in the city's parks, in the city parks. This is a change from an earlier request for $250,000 in notes, as the administration has determined that the pump in the, in the Allmiller Pool also needs to be replaced this summer. Kelly Patterson of the administration and Service Foreman Jeff Dunn detailed how cost estimates for park improvements have changed since December 2017. The committee suggested that a second opinion be solicited on how much it will cost to repair the tennis and pickleball courts at Allmiller Park. Shaw made a motion to request legislation to provide for the issuance and sale of $300,000 of notes in anticipation of a bond issuance to pay the cost of capital improvements in the city parks, with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. A special full council meeting was, has been scheduled for 6:00 P.M. On May 30th to consider legislation. Number three, Sack adjourned the meeting at 6:24 P.M.
Any questions or comments regarding this report? Okay, thank you. And then we have the Finance Committee had a special meeting on Tuesday, June the 5th, at 6:50 P.M. Ms. Sack?
Yes. Um, members present were Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and myself, Chair. Number one, the Special Finance Committee meeting was called by Finance Chair Monica Sack and Finance Committee Members Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, and Andrew Shaw to discuss amendments to ordinance number 20-2018, providing the issuance of bond anticipation notes for park improvements. The meeting was called to order by Sack at 6:50 P.M. Number two, amendments to ordinance number 20-2018. Um, so the changes were to the land which in just Section 1. Um, number three. Um, Dan made a motion to approve the changes to Section 1, with a second by Kevin. All were in favor. Um, motion to adjourn the meeting, Andrew Shaw first, second Kevin Myers, and Monica adjourned the meeting at 6:54 P.M.
Okay, and the motion made by Wireball and Myers passed, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Okay, moving on. Uh, traffic commission, we don't have any traffic commission minutes this evening, but does anyone have any traffic questions for the mayor?
Is there a traffic commission meeting?
Nothing right now.
What, are they all working on the railroad tracks up here?
Which ones are you talking about?
On Sandusky. I just seen some, each other telling.
I, you know, I think that, they just.
Road closed signs, I wonder what's going on.
I think those might be for, I'm guessing those are for the car show this weekend.
Oh, okay, just out there, okay.
Yeah.
Just wondering.
Yeah, we're still working with, um, Central, um, over on, um, Oakwood, Oakwood Street, yeah, still negotiating on that right now.
I just, I knew they were over there.
I saw those two, I think, yeah. Yeah, so there, I, and I, and I don't, I don't know any closures on Sandusky. The only thing I can think of is the car show.
Yeah.
Just getting head started on that.
And they're still working on Southern Avenue. They're putting the cement around all the little openings that have to be done. And somebody thought the road was open today and drove through wet cement, thank you very much. That means it has to be done over again. So, um, that road is closed. That's why those big road closed signs are there, because they are working there, okay?
In the home stretch, though.
Yeah, I know. It's going to be nice when it's done.
It's will.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Myers, uh, accept the committee and related committee reports except collectively. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed, moving to report to city officers. Mary, sir?
Thank you, Madam President. Spring is turning quickly into summer. Maybe you can see it. Uh, parks are getting a lot of use, the pool is open, and we've had two very busy weekends. Doing very well. Uh, flower baskets went up this week. Volunteers are replacing water, watering them, Washington Square is outstanding as usual. So many volunteers, you know, work together to make that possible. And, uh, these are people that, you know, do it just for the love of the community. We can't do it without, we want to thank them. We'll honor them later on in the year, like we always do. Uh, you may have noticed, uh, if you're driving up South Sandusky, uh, the, the tree planting, the refoliation on South Sandusky has started. Uh, the trees look beautiful, and, uh, we'll do more of them in the fall. Just keeping them watered, we have, we have a tank now, we're going to keep them watered. We had a generous donor, uh, that was buying the gator bags for us. And, uh, so we're anxious to get those established and grown. Uh, first Friday was a huge success. Thanks to Chamberlain, many volunteers, all the people who made it possible. Uh, Mr. Ratliff did another great job at Chinesar Park, another great turnout. I don't know, every week he stops, and what's he going to do this week? So we'd like to thank him. Back to reality, we're going to be announcing, uh, a water rate. Now, our rates are about 30% below of what was recommended by our engineers, so through good fiscal management and some fortunate breaks in interest rates, and we've been able to reduce, keep our rates low. And so we're very proud of that, but we will have to, of course, uh, pay back our loans. I think we made, uh, two payments already, is that right, Ms. Schiffer? We made the second payment now?
Uh, second payment's due July 2nd.
Uh, second payment's due July 2nd.
Okay, so we're coming in on that. So, so, uh, my remarks need to be corrected. We will be, I have said we already made two payments, uh, we will be making two payments very soon. We've already made the first one. Um, we are looking at every line in that budget to make sure we save money, and we have some other ideas. Every place we save money, um, is going to go right back in the pockets of the consumers. And, uh, our goal to keep our future rate increases is low as possible. We're also, as you know, working on a, uh, aggressive plan to sell water. You're all involved in that, uh, all on board on that, outside city limits and increasing revenue, cutting expenses. It's going to reduce the burden on residents and their business. Uh, in the future, you know, we're in, we're in a situation where it really could have been, a lot of it could have been avoided. City Council of previous administrations, we're not as proactive in my opinion as they should have been. Uh, the, the water rate had not been raised for 12 years. I mean, even if you count inflation there, you're still looking at 30 to 40%, just to keep up with the cost of the contract that we were behind. And, uh, there was a very, very, very small amount saved for the new plant. Uh, I understand it does take, you know, some guts and courage to raise rates, but it has to be done. Uh, because the people that are suffering the most now, um, you know, it could have been spread out. Um, but we have about 19 years to go, so hang in there. Um, and just that urge you, when you're setting rates for all the utilities, uh, including solid waste, please at least keep up with inflation, the cost of the new contracts, which can, you know, run 2% to 3% and the cost of supplies too. At the very minimum, all rates must be kept up with those contracts. So that's all I'm going to say about this tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the mayor this evening? None? Moving on. Oh, we do have a report from the service director.
Yes, and I'm going to put my Jeff Wagner hat on here.
Okay.
Uh, he's, uh, we'll start it out great, just as I mentioned, had two fantastic weekends. Got a great staff out there. Everybody's on the same page. We just hired two, uh, possibly three seasonal park workers. We're a little behind in the mowing, everything went loose and it grew, and, uh, we were shorthanded, we had some people off. The boom mower, just, uh, operator just started last week, so we hope by the end of the week, we're going to be up to full staff and, uh, the mowing will be caught up. Uh, number three, there's been a change in leadership at Underground Utilities, so which is in our favor. We're going to move forward and finish Southern Avenue. The report Bruce Branstad, our engineer from Branstad, Carol will be here on Thursday at committee meetings to give you an update on this year's projects, which are many. And, uh, last but not least, uh, still working with Arcadis and our engineer Gordon Guinness, uh, our VP reporting, uh, which is a massive management plan, which is coming up sooner rather than later. We're on, on schedule with it. That's it from Jeff.
Okay, any questions that you want for the service safety director?
Yes.
Yes, Myers?
Mr. Mayor, um, I had, had multiple people contact me regarding the, the height of grass on some of the properties around town. I already spoke to Mr. Ratliff, and I did ask a question, Mr. Mayor. I was, and I think he kind of nailed something, and they're saying we're up to full staff on mowing, so we're going to be getting caught on that. But one of the other questions was, is, is there anything we can do to be more proactive? It seems like the processes we have in place now, when a lawn gets so tall, it takes so long to go through the process, that by the time we can do anything, it's, I don't know if and when.
Are you talking about, are you talking about complaints?
Yeah.
About, I'm talking about complaints about people's property?
Correct. One, in particular, we've had multiple neighbors call about the school on Jump Street.
Okay. Um, those are referred over to Gordon. As far as for speeding them up, we'll have to, I, uh, what do we, what do we do in a case like this? I mean, we, we, there's a, there's a series of, uh, things that we have to do. These are not land bank properties, are they, you're talking about?
Right, that's a whole nother issue that I think we've got resolved.
Okay, great. Okay, so, um, we'll get together and bring it up and get back with you. How would that be?
Perfect.
Thank you. And you said the school on Jump Street?
Yeah.
Okay. It's frustrating.
Even the ones that wants their mow, you know, they, they were so long, they had a bunch of dead brown law grass.
I understand. Thank you very much. That's a, yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, law director, Mr. Ratliff.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, we're, we're reporting tonight, uh, I'd say Mr. Caldwell for counting in and giving us an update. He's been a tremendous asset for us, uh, and really has tapped in with some, uh, funding and some, uh, assets for some of our local citizens to take advantage of in the free legal help, which includes maybe even access to divorce, divorce attorneys and funding for filing fees, which is historically has always, always been a tremendous problem locally. Uh, just the, the, the cost of being divorced for a lot of our victims is, is tremendous stuff. Uh, that's something that we really look for to take advantage of. Movie nights, as, as the mayor said, have been spectacular. Uh, great turnout for both, both ones we've done. Uh, we have another one coming up this Saturday after the car show. Um, it, uh, that's one of the county president's favorites. And, uh, you know, it'll be a good time, and, uh, I think, I mean, people are enjoying it. The food court has gone over really well up front. Uh, last week, the, uh, food truck, uh, one of our food trucks ran out of food. Uh, they are, uh, they are anxious to get back and get it back at it, and I'm sure it'll be much better stock. So, uh, it's been a good, great time, so definitely something to get out, get out and see. It's a, it's great, great event for families, so. Um, I think that's about it.
Okay. Questions or comments for the law director this evening?
Thank you for all the effort you put into that. It's much appreciated by us and the mayor.
Well, I appreciate it. It's, it's, it's a lot of fun. It really is. And we can see the people, you know, just, it's the, the whole community from, from all over South.
Who's the sponsor this week?
Oh, very good. Uh, this week's sponsor, coincidentally with the car show, uh, sponsored both events, is the Cyrus Return Order Police. So, uh, this week's movie, uh, they, they sponsored that movie, and it ties in well with the car show, I'll say.
Goodness algeable.
Yes, yes.
Can you mention the first two sponsors?
The first sponsor was, uh, or the first sponsor was Cyrus City Council. Uh, our second sponsor was Wyche Funeral Home. They got rained out, so their makeup day is June 22nd.
16, I think.
No, 22nd.
22nd.
22nd, it's, uh, it's Saturday. And then, um, uh, the last sponsor at the Princess Bride was the Cyrus Public Library. And, uh, very, very grateful to them. They're also, the public library is also helping us with the DVD's, probably, because they're the ones that provide the DVDs. So that's a, that's a big help as well. Who knew you could get DVDs at the library? You can't. So if you're in need of a DVD, go see the library.
Okay, just bring a chair, bring blankets there. Some sitting in the grass, some sitting in chairs.
Chairs, blankets.
Yeah. Get comfortable.
Lots of popcorn. And I will say.
Buy some popcorn and watch a movie.
And, and I will say this, after both of the movies, I mean, we had, we had a tremendous amount of people there, and, uh, the next morning, I've, I've gotten up, goes over, you can barely tell there's anything there.
All the trashers and the cans.
Trashers and the cans. I mean, there's a few scattered pieces of popcorn, and, uh, and that's it. And, and I will say that the Guardian Angels deserve a ton of credit. They, they're out there every week with their popcorn wagon, giving free popcorn to the kids. And I mean, because this is a, a free event and a community event, it's great that we're all able to offer something like that to the kids for free, so kind of everybody has a snack, you know? And, uh, and that's a great asset. But they, after they're done, they're out there sweeping and cleaning and moving barricades and, and doing all that work, so, uh, really a tremendous, uh, thank you, you've got to give to the Guardian Angels for doing all that for us.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, moving on, auditor, Ms. Schiffer?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't think I can talk, but go auditor.
I've been tied up for two days with, with auditors, so I'm a little, um, behind right
now. As but I do have a question for the mayor. Actually, do you know if the service director was able to make contact regarding the other referral? Are we going to?
You talking about the, uh, demolition?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Do we need to refer that?
Yes.
Because it wasn't in his report.
Yeah, we need to refer that. Is it, is it in committee already?
I don't think so.
The demolition isn't part of the original project?
Oh, well, it is, uh, well, I guess I may as well just jump in. Uh, there, we're working on an application for a supplemental loan, uh, to pay the difference on, uh, what we have left in contingencies from the first one and the cost of the demolition and cleanup of the old water filtration plant.
Okay, this doesn't include the water line itself, the old water line?
Yes, it does.
It does? Okay, so, both those two things that need to be finished, Jeff?
We have roughly.
And the lagoons, okay.
Yeah, we have roughly $793,000 left in contingencies to be used for the demolition, the water lines, and, and the lagoon cleaning. Uh, but the bids came in at approximately 1.1 million, so we're about $300,000 short. And, uh, so it was brought to my attention that we needed to do this application, but there's a piece of legislation that needs to be passed by council before then. So we need to refer this to, um, finance and public lands and buildings?
Sure, yes.
Or service, or I, whoever it needs to go to.
Water service. It's all part of water service, so that would go to service.
Service and finance.
Okay. Okay, that's one.
That's one, okay. Then I would like to appropriate the funds that we'll be receiving from the sale of our bond anticipation notes, and this, we'll be running this through the general fund. So from unappropriated funds in the general fund/Program 3 Leisure Time/7310 Parks and Playgrounds/25 Capital Outlay, the sum of $100,000 for park improvements, and 7315 swimming pool/25 Capital Outlay, the amount of $200,000 for swimming pool improvements. Then I would also like to refer the billlet to the finance committee for a change in personnel in the income tax department.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the auditor? Okay, first, let's do the, uh, well, let's do the first one, from the unappropriated funds for, uh, the money we're receiving for Allmiller Park or park improvements. I need a motion for that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Ms. Wireball. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Then, uh, we need to refer the, uh, billlet, uh, to finance committee for personnel changes in the income tax department.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fote, second by Ms. Sac, to refer the billlet to the finance committee for a change in personnel in the income tax department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Are we going to need the manpower too, or not?
No.
Okay. And finally, uh, what was?
It's a constitutional freezing, the application for a WSRLA.
Okay, this is the WSRLA, additional WSRLA loan for the, um, uh, demolition of the water plant, old water plant, the water line and the line lagoons. It needs to go to service and finance. I need a motion, please.
Second.
Second.
Who's the second? Mr. Fote? Motion by Ms. Sac, second by Mr. Fote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Okay, we've got that one. You have the auditor statement of cash position dated May the 31st, 2018. We'll hold that until the next meeting. And, uh, we've also received the treasurer's report for April 2018 has been submitted, and we'll hold that for the next meeting. We have nothing from the police chief or the fire chief this evening. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Fote, second by Mr. Myers to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where visitors input regarding the standing in or special committees and of city officers. Anyone would like to address council? For consideration of legislation for the first time.
We've got four pieces, uh, three ordinances and one resolution. Ordinance number 21, 2018, amendment and supplementing the Cyrus Codified Ordinance Section 1163.04 entitled conditional leases under Chapter 1163, entitled R3 Urban Labor and Residential District under Title IX, entitled zoning districts under Title XI, entitled planning and zoning code of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Cyrus. That goes to Plating. Ordinance number 22, 2018, amendment and supplementing ordinance number 5717 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2018. By appropriating from unappropriated general funds, the sum of $115,000 to the materials and supplies line item within the police department category within the Program 1 Security of Persons and Property subparagraph, further appropriating from unappropriated general funds, the sum of $64,030 to the capital outlay line item within the Parks and Playgrounds category within the Program 3 Leisure Time subparagraph, and finally, appropriating from unappropriated derelict building liability funds, the sum of $16,920 to the other uses line item within the Fire Department category within the derelict building liability subparagraph, and declaring an emergency. That goes to finance. Ordinance number 23, 2018, and ordinance, the amendment in Section 1 of ordinance number 20, 2018, and declaring an emergency. That goes to finance. And, resolution number 227, 2018, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Cyrus to dispose of personal property and equipment that's having become obsolete, unnecessary or unfit for city use through internet options during the calendar year 2018, and declaring that this resolution shall take effect retroactively as of January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018, and declaring an emergency. That goes to finance as well. That's it.
I need a motion to accept this as the first reading of these.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schock, second by Mr. Truca, to accept this as the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Ordinance number 21-2018 is referred back to Plating Committee. Ordinance 22-2018 is referred back to Finance. Ordinance 23-2018 is referred back to Finance, and resolution 227-2018 is referred back to Finance Committee. This is the time where we have public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone wish to address council? No one? Do we need a recess?
No.
Committee reports on pending legislation. Plating Committee?
Plating Committee is favorable to ordinance 21-2018, R3 District Zoning Amendment.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable to ordinance 22-2018, the various appropriations. Finance Committee is favorable to ordinance 23-2018, ordinance 20-2018 amendments. And Finance Committee is favorable to resolution 227-2018, the internet option.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept these reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Fote, second by Mr. Truca, to accept the reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number 21-2018, which is the R3 District Zoning Amendment, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text?
Second.
Sac?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever? Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-eighteen?
So move. Second.
Truca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Sack?
Yeah.
Fote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-eighteen, which are the various appropriations, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So move. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever? Ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever? Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-eighteen, which, uh, amends ordinance number twenty dash twenty-eighteen, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So move. Second.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever? Ordinance number twenty-three, twenty-eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-eighteen?
So move. Second.
Fote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever? Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty dash twenty-eighteen is duly adopted. I'm sorry, ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-eighteen is duly adopted. Uh, for the second and third readings of proposed resolution two twenty-seven dash twenty-eighteen, which are the inter- which is the internet options, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So move. Second.
McKeever, uh, Wireball?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever? Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two twenty-seven dash twenty-eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Resolution number two twenty-seven dash twenty-eighteen is duly adopted. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business. The open project lists are in your packets today. Take a look at those and see if there are any items that you need to be brought up to date on or to get onto the agenda for one of the Thursday meetings. Any other unfinished business anyone would like to bring up this evening? None? Moving on to new and miscellaneous business. Access TV is now on channel ten twenty-one for Spectrum, uh, customers. That was, uh, when they made the change over to digital, that popped up in there. And I think it's either on, is it on channel nine or channel six? If you use the lower channels.
No.
It's not there anymore? It's just on ten?
Not anymore.
Okay, it's on ten twenty-one.
Ten twenty-one, you have to have-
Digital.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have to have digital to get it now.
Okay. Uh, Thursday, June the si- seventh, City Planning Commission is at four P M. On Saturday, June the ninth, is Cruisin' with the Cops Car Show from two to ten P M. It's sponsored by the Visarus F O P Lodge number sixty-eight. Saturday, June the ninth, is the Sunset Movie in Shines Art Park.